Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll rise for allegiance. Let me do... Yep. We're good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and no other, for all. Okay, welcome everyone. I guess this is the nice night before... It's really hot, right? It is summer, so looking forward to that. I have two things I want to... Announcements I want to do before I get started here. One is to talk about the flow of the meeting, but the other one was that the last meeting, I announced the unfortunate news that trustee O'Reilly had passed right before the meeting. And so, her husband Bill asked, you know, just days apart if you will, and this Thursday, July 24th, there'll be a funeral mass, a Catholic mass, at St. Mary's in Buffalo Grove at 10:30, 10:30 to 11:30. And then, there'll be a celebration of life, all invited, at the Buffalo Creek Brewery from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And sad news, but we'll celebrate her life later this week. The next thing I want to do is just talk about the meeting tonight. I know there's a topic that's of interest to a lot of folks here, and I kinda wanna just outline how we're going to proceed, so that we have just kind of a plan of this. So, as usual, we have a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting, and that's really for stuff that's not on the agenda. And then, we want to try to keep that succinct to 10 minutes, three minutes maximum per person. And then, you know, if we run out of time, there's always the way, you know, all these written remarks can be sent to me, the village board, via the website, et cetera. For those that are here for Lake Shore Canine, that is on the agenda, I would ask that any comments regarding that be deferred until that section of the meeting. And I would, you know, just, you know, just be mindful, this really isn't a public hearing at any, at this point, and that, but, and we've received a lot of information so far from, from you all, and we had, we took a lot of comments at the last meeting, so just be mindful of that. And so, with that in mind, what I'm going to do is basically then move through the agenda, but then I'll come back to this and how we're gonna proceed with the orderly flow for Lake Shore Canine, so that we have a, you know, productive meeting tonight. So, thank you for understanding that. And then, what I'll do now is move to the homeowners associations. If there's anyone present or online, we have two of them, Burr Oaks, Marion Motto, Marion Motto James, are you here, or anyone from Burr Oaks? Or Stonehaven John Lowes? Nobody online or anywhere else? Can you hear me online? I hope so. Now, we'll move into the public comment section, not for Lake Shore Canine. Anyone have any public comment? Benjamin Matthews?
My name is Benjamin Matthew, in the Village. I just have one question and one comment. The first question is, has there been any updates, status updates, for special use applications for 4359 and 22? And my comment is, I think it was wonderful that you guys had the classic car show in downtown Long Grove, and it was great, but with that being said, I noticed they put signs along, around the village, and I think it'd be nice if we ever had this kind of special benefit, they make sure that you pick up their signs after they're done, because if they're still on 22 and 30, I just think that would just make the village look nicer. Thanks.
You gonna have a comment?
No update on the special use permit. And yeah, if you see any signs, let us know, and we'll make sure they get taken down right away. But typically, they're supposed to do that.
Other public comment? Not related to Lake Shore Canine? Okay, you don't have to do that, you can do it on your report.
No, it's not a report item, it's a public comment item, a couple items. Burbank American Senior League Boys Baseball Team has won the state and regional championship, and will be representing the state and the region in the Senior World Series coming up next week. By the way, that's coached by my nephew, that's why I bring it up. But it's the fourth time that they've done that in a row. If you think about the odds and the probability of me having to do that, it's really a phenomenon. Also, really, the public comment I did want to make, there's a young man, one of our neighbors who is seriously ill, 15-year-old boy with cancer, and just wanted to, you know, if anybody's religious, prayers are certainly in order, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Chris, sorry to hear that. Other public comment? All right, then we'll move to the public safety report, but I don't think we have anyone here to deliver a report, correct?
Nope.
You don't want to give one, Chris? All right, sure. Okay, all right, take that as a no. All right, so now we have the consent agenda, and there's three items on it. It's approval of the June 2025 Treasurers Report, approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the July 8th meeting, subject to non-sustantative revisions, and approval of executive staff's meeting minutes from the July 8th, 2025 meeting, same thing, subject to non-sustantative revision. Any questions, or somebody want to make a motion to approve? Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Harris. Phil?
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
Trustee Chosky?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Tenerci?
Aye.
Trustee Jacob?
Yes, I don't think I have to vote. So, motion carried, right? All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of an ordinance granting zoning relief for Lake Shore Canine, and there's an A and a B on that. One is the change in the special use, and the other one, the other one is granting a preliminary special use permit. So, let me, let me start with some thoughts there on this as promised. You know, as I said, we're gonna allow public comment for Lake Shore Canine, the board will allow public comment for Lake Shore Canine, you know, during this section of the meeting. I'll just remind everyone that, you know, there was the public hearing, and I know not everyone was able to attend. We did vote, we did, we did basically, at the last meeting, entertain a lot of public comment, more than normal. We also allowed the attorney representing the, you know, the residents to participate at the last meeting. We received a lot of written commentary, I tried to respond to some. I will apologize if I didn't respond to all of them. I did my best, I know, I'm sure some of the other trustees did as well, and I've read every single one of them. So, some of the concerns that came up, obviously, I'll just go through them really quick. Noise, that's, that's a big concern, and the PCCBA also flagged that as a potential concern, and they noted it in the draft ordinance, as the noise mitigation plan would need to be prepared, if, you know, to get this to a final approval. So, if, if the ordinance does pass tonight, that would be something that would still have to be done, and that would, there would be appropriate hearings with the Plan Commission, because it would go back to them still for that. Traffic, you know, although the impact of the proposed development on Old McHenry Road requires evaluation, this is technically not a long Grove thing, because it's a county road, so that'll actually end up going back to them for their ultimate decision-making on the traffic piece of it. The wetland impacts, the applicant has begun to look at the wetlands, and, you know, begun to, to look at that, any potential issues, and then, that will be reviewed, once plans get before the engineer, they'll be reviewed by the village engineer. Groundwater impacts, the applicant also has begun to look at this issue. This will also be reviewed by the village engineer as the plans become more complete. Additionally, because the development will need its own well, on-site well, the Lake County Health Department will be evaluating the impacts of the groundwater quality, which was an issue that everyone had. Property values, I think everyone is concerned about that, and I'm personally concerned about property values. I saw the appreciation, I was looking online where everyone's houses were, and I was looking at, like, if you look online what some people paid for their house, and what they're appreciated now, in the last five years, it's unbelievable, by the way. So, nobody wants to jeopardize that. So, so that is a concern, but also, the, if, if this property can be developed in a way that's appropriate and for everyone, that'll get rid of the blight there, too. That should also help your property value maybe even increase further. So, to the extent that you've commented on the matters that were not addressed at the last meeting, or in correspondence, the village board welcomes them, you know, during this public comment section, which will come up shortly. I'll just ask to not be repetitious, to, you know, try to bring things new up that weren't thought about, and we'll, you know, again, try to keep that to a short period of time. You know, one final point that everyone should be aware of, if something does get approved tonight, it is preliminary, it is preliminary, it's not a final PUD. It still has to go back before the Plan Commission for final approval, there will be more public hearings, and then it eventually comes back to the board. It's not, nothing can get passed in a final way tonight if something does happen. So, for the purposes of organizing the village board's discussion night, we'll approach it in a few ways. I understand that, number one, the applicant has a oral presentation that you want to make, right? Correct? To update us on some of the feedback that you've received, so we'll start with you, and then after that, we would like to open it up for public comment. I know we always put on the agenda 10 minutes, three minutes maximum per person, you know, if we need to go a little more, we will, I just, if we can keep it concise, that would be great. We do have a lot of business to get done tonight, and I know this is the most important thing for you all here tonight, so I don't mean to diminish that by saying it that way. I just want to make sure we're efficient and we're productive. And then, after that, we'll bring it back to the board to discuss the application amongst the board, to figure out where to go next. This may not get passed tonight, it could get passed, I don't know, we're gonna find out, but stay tuned on that. So, with that, I will stop. Thanks for listening to me, pontificate. I'm going to turn it over to Chris. I think you're gonna be leading the presentation from the applicant, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Take it away.
For those who don't know me, I'm Chris Polk, I'm the architect on the project. I'm also there with the property to work in the village. And as you mentioned, you know, during the last meeting, we have been active to try to address the neighbors' concerns. We do pay them very seriously, and we have been, you know, making phone calls and trying to get the proper people involved to get answers. You know, regarding traffic, today I did hear back from Lake County Department of Transportation, there's comments regarding the access into the project. And so, the way they said it, the way they worded it, which I forwarded email over to Chris, is that we have to, we will have to apply for the highway permit access, and at that time, the final location for the access and the configuration of the site will be determined by Lake County. So, they have reviewed the zoning area site plan, but we haven't applied for the permit yet, and that's mainly just because of the cost involved and all the amount of time it takes to do all that work upfront without any sort of approvals. So, that's something we are working with, and if the project does go forward, we will get that application in and continue the process, which is typical, not just to Lake County, if you go into Will County, or, you know, to Page County, it's kind of a similar process, that once final engineering is underway, you kind of start involving the local authorities for their comments. And also, we did look at the wetland area, we, there is a report that was already submitted, it was the wetland report, we did make a phone call back to the person who provided the report, to talk about any sort of discharging, and any sort of, how close animals can be to the wetlands. So, just to recap, is that there's two lines on the site, there is the Hunter-Grift flood plan, which is the southern line, that's on the site plan, and then within north of that is actually the wetland, so, which is about another 60 to 100 feet north. Our, our dog park is south of the flood plain, so it's not near the wetlands, and the response we got back from the wetland specialist is that this is not a concern, having dogs, they said you can be within five feet of the wetlands, but we're not even close to that, and, and so there's not a concern, we submitted a letter, just to kind of show that for record. Another thing was regarding the sanitation, and, you know, we're still on track to tie in with the, the public sewer, so this is not a testing system, so all the, all the plumbing inside the building will be connected to the sewer, and head out to the north, along Old, Old Lincoln Road. The well is, as you mentioned, it is a private well, and, and it's a difficult process, is that we have to get in a, a well contractor who will do testing of the site. There is public records available, that we did look at, and they determined that the, that the, any sort of animal, any sort of animal waste produced on the site, based on the soil makeup and the distance from any wells, is not a concern. And it is typical for us to provide, have projects that are animal care-related, whether it's animal shelters, veterinary clinics, and our own well systems. So, this is not uncommon to have a, this type of use in a well system. But regardless, this will have to be permitted, and we have to go through the county to get that permitted, the health department, that's pretty difficult. And we will approach that as, as things move along as well. And a couple other things of the, you know, just the condition of the site, you know, it's in very poor condition, it's, you know, kind of a safety hazard, in a way, it's been like that for a while since it's been closed. You know, what we are proposing is a pretty big investment, you know, to the site, a couple million dollars, you know, in the property, which is a lot of money in its current state. There's a lot of demolition that has to happen, which is very expensive, and it's new construction. And as I mentioned last night, like, we do specialize in veterinary care work, and we take things very seriously. We have a lot of projects that are in close proximity to residential, and we're not geared, busy usually with a site that's five acres, usually we're dealing with sites that are acres and under, and we have residential adjacent to it. It's pretty common, and, and we do take, you know, we do do things to make sure noises to a minimum. The biggest thing is that the animals are kept indoors, we don't do outside kennels in this facility, and, and the animal kennels are inside to keep, to keep things to a quiet. So, I know a lot of neighbors are concerned about that, and, and the ones who are not, were not at the last meeting, a couple things we did talk about is just the capacity of this, you know, the capacity of this project, it's a 50-dog facility, and, and a lot of clinics, and 40 facilities, we do, or several hundred animals, there's times we do 50 animals in one room. So, this entire building has 50 animals, it's a very low volume. And, and as you guys heard last week, with the, the way the owner presented the project, it's kind of a, it's a higher-end product, and, and they're dealing with low volume, that deals with, you know, a lot of attention to the animals, so it's not your typical high-capacity facility, it's not what we're interested in on this, on this particular site, it's a low capacity. 50 animals is, in my, in my realm, is about what it gets, we don't really do a facility less than that. It's just not, it's just not how typically things play out in the profession. And, and I know there was a lot of concerns about property values, I'm not sure how that can be addressed, is it, and I guess we'd be looking for a direction from the village. We've, I've done a lot of PVDs, a lot of special use permits, we never provided appraisal on projects, so I guess I'll be looking for a direction from either the trustees or the attorney, on how something like that would be approached, because I think we're all in the same boat, there's no one has any interest in reducing property values, reality is that commercial businesses have value just like commercial properties, so, you know, no one wants to be, you know, having negative value on the property, that's pretty common, and I know the residents are concerned, and the owners are concerned, too, because they got, they're investing in this property as well. And it's not like they're not, you know, they're the, they're gonna be working there, they're gonna be at this project, it's not a corporation, so, you know, they have, they're heavily interested in making sure, you know, everyone's happy, and everyone could find common ground. So, I'll kind of leave it at that, you know, it sounds like there's gonna be a handful of comments, and happy to answer any questions you have, we're in the village here, if I can answer questions, too.
Thank you, thank you. Just, can I ask one question before we move, open it up to public comment? Is there an idea of what something like this costs, of what somebody would pay to board their dog? Just out of curiosity? Do you know?
Yeah, so currently, at our current general purchase facility, the minimum rate is $65 an evening, for standard pair, up to $8 an evening. So, we anticipate this to be slightly higher than that, but clients will also be, they'll be required to be a member in order to utilize the services, so there'll be an additional membership on top of that.
Got it, so it's more than some hotel rooms, perhaps?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So, guess you could put your dog in a hotel room.
[laughing]
I don't know, it just depends, I get some different rates, okay? There's, there's no roaches, okay? I assure you. All right, thank you for answering that question. I will now open it up for public comment, so whoever wants to begin. Please state your name, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Emmanuel Byron, I'm a land use attorney for Shane Banks, and I believe my colleague Mick Stanford, who's here, will be supporting me in the public comment. I will keep it short and succinct, we've got, I just kind of have three things I really want to bring up.
Sure.
First, the proposal is incompatible with the comprehensive plan that you guys have set out for your village. The subject property is currently done for farm-to-table or agricultural use, our most previously used, obviously, as a camp. Establishment can I use, can I use there is just incompatible with the current set, current set comprehensive plan and the vision that you guys have for that subject property. Also, I want to highlight that the amount of zoning relief required to then establish this use also shows is incompatibility with the vision for the village house for that block. We also are providing, we provided a letter, I don't know if you guys received our letter, if not, we'll provide a copy right here, just in case, that what you guys have to reference, we're in, throwing all the public comments, and the neighbors will be, you know, bringing up ample information.
This is the letter right here?
Should be absolutely, yep, you guys are right.
And there's a few other ones that I got today, too.
They're bringing a copy of that, so I'll review them. All right. The letter just generally highlights, it also provides an MIA appraiser, who just highlighted that the application was incomplete and not capable of being able to, to accurately estimate damage to people's property to the north. As you, as you mentioned, there are a buddy residential to the, to the direct north of the proposed use, which could significantly decrease the property values, their property values are estimated between 1 and 1.8 million as of current. Lastly, the standards that the applicant applied with. Now, you know, applicants are, have the burden of producing evidence for the board to be able to make a justification or, for the proposed use here, one of the standards in the zoning ordinance is that it does not negatively impact property values, and as they did not submit any documentation or evidence, or evidence for that, it should just be remanded, so then that way, the PC, DPH can accurately decide and have the evidence in front of them, and then also hear public comments from people who have an interest in the land directly to the north. For all of those reasons, our clients believe that the zoning relief should be denied, and that the fairing least should be remanded. The last thing I have for you guys is just ample information of that. When you come out here, one of the greatest things you get to, get to is experience in Long Grove, is the fresh air, and the peace, and the quiet. An establishment can use that, might have a very large testable level, might have offensive odors, and might have contamination into the ground, it's not like you're a guy's residence moved here, and I just have to, I hope you guys keep that in mind when you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
I'm George Molital from 519 Time Report.
Got it.
I'm just behind the property.
I read your email, yep.
You're one of it for your records, I have not printed it to me. So, I think this stays exactly what you have.
Any summary, anything from you?
So, first is, we look at the document that was, and so, respected Bill Jacobs, trustee, first of all, we appreciate the voluntary plan that you're putting inside, I mean, so we really appreciate that, we appreciate the partnership of the applicants, I mean, that's very creative, very nice, we appreciate that. We respect them, we have nothing against them, we have nothing against ours, we are only looking at, you know, is this the right way to put that document, because as far as what he said, I think it is not right. So, one of the things that we saw, was the consultant used the wrong code, AUC 640, instead of, you know, AUC 565. So, AUC 640, if you look at AUC 640, that's for a veterinary clinic, now, if you do a wrong code to the applicant, I mean, to, for a consultant study, you get the wrong output off. Now, who are the other people who are, you know, in that AUC, I mean, look at, if you look at any of the veterinary clinics, where you have a vet doctor, where you have this one, where you stand in hospital, we're, we're all under 640, this one would be rightly coming under 565. And if you take 565, the incidence of traffic goes four times higher, not once, it goes four times higher. And if it goes four times higher, there were about 18 police reported accidents in the last three years. That would go to almost, per year, it would go to almost another 570 accidents, if you go under the same 640 code. That's the first thing I wanted to bring. The second thing is, 50 barking dogs, this decibel level will go to about 110 decibel points. And what we are saying is, if you, even if you put the noise value, if you put everything over there, at our property value, it would still be within 75, 80 decibel levels. At 80 decibel levels, your village code is only 55 decibel levels for, you know, noise pollution. This would actually come straight in, and you'd be, it's like, you know, we're sitting in for a barbecue, or we're sitting, our kids want to study, in whatever it is, this is exactly what's gonna happen, we're going to be having noise levels. And if you look at cases, there are cases that have got six fecal payments, crane and oxygen, they want six fecal payments, just by, you know what, they went to the property quarter, they got somebody to come and take an acoustic study, they took the, the, you know, played this phone, and automatically it just happened. The third point was, you know, order and wait. Now, I put it out here, but let me show the mathematics to you. One dog pee is about one liter urine a day. Now, I give you, I can give you the exhibits, exhibits for all the evidences I here, so you can study that your leisure, so all the exhibits are here. So, one liter, you'd say, 50 dogs, 13 gallons a day, 13 gallons is 9,800 gallons a year. In five years, this goes through almost eight tanks of food of dog urine that's going into the ground, it's soaking into the ground. Eight tanks of food of dog urine just going into the ground, and you know where it's coming? It's just on the flood plain, it's coming straight into our, our properties. Our farms, we have 80 there, we have Tim here, we have Owen here, we have Bobby, they're all victims of this eight tanks of lit, liters of urine that's just circulating inside. Now, there's a case that was put over there, they won Richard versus Brock, a Texas facility. They had eight PPM, and they shut down the whole place, just because of that smell and that, that thing. 22 tons of fecal matter. Now, we had the applicant knock and say, you know, it's 50 dog parts, so we're just gonna have somebody walk in there, and the, you know, there's people scooping enough, scooping up a dog, you know, with, 50 dog parts, imagine, you have a, you know, 50 dogs in this room, they're going to be growling, they're going to be running against each other, and one dog pees. Do you think a owner will come inside 50 draw, growling dogs, and try to pick up their poop? Is it possible? There's no dog, growling is not possible, and that is a key of access, so we don't believe what's being said over there. That's for the 22 tons of feces. Now, next is groundwater. We had this gentleman saying that, you know what, the suckers are gonna come inside, and there's no problem with the flood, but we have to say very clearly out here, one kg of nitrogen comes in every day, one kg of nitrogen comes in every day, and 100 trillion raw form comes in because of the fecal matter, 100 trillion, every day, in five years, is 1.6 tons of nitrogen. Now, EPA standards, the U.S. say, if there's a well, and it goes more than 10 GPA particles, then you know that is not portable. Eddie's got a grandchild, Tim has got a grandchild, we have got children, we have got this one, and you know, if it's not portable, what's the, what's that, what's the thing? You have blue babies, you have pregnancy miscarriages, you have colorectal cancer, you have gastric cancers, that's the impact of the portable water that would happen if this 22- That's the impact of the portable water that would happen if this twenty-two, you know, tons of feces and, you know, fifty gallons of urine that's going into the water. Horn was a dog day resort, they shut down the whole unit and, you know, they're not right. All this is resulting in property values going down.
Hey George, you're like six minutes into this, so I just want to let you know.
I'm just closing, I'm just closing.
Okay, got it.
So this is like bringing the property value down.
Okay.
So if it's bringing the property value down, then, you know, we can't have a business that is making money on reusing property value, reusing speeds, reusing, you know, potential smelt, reusing our portable water. That cannot happen. And that's, this is...
Thank you, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, but thank you. Other comments? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Aditya, I live at 44547 Pamela Court in Wayover State, two years ago of Long Grove. I'm here to speak because I'm really interested in these conversations and I've been hearing a lot of potential impacts that I have in our community, specifically related to noise, traffic, and levels of pollution that are unhealthy to members of our community who are living near this facility or might live near this facility. I think it's really important to consider those things because this is our community. One of the things that these Long Grove, Long Grove is the fact that we are a historic town, we're beautiful, we maintain our property, we maintain our land. But another thing to consider is that around thirty-six percent of our population is students like me, children under the age of twenty-four. And what we do want to provide for them is places where they can hang out, places where they can socialize, places where they can go and buy some new clothes. Currently for me as a student, where I go to buy clothes is Moonless or Vernon Hills or Buffalo Grove. And what I think is necessary for Long Grove to continue as a town, not just for the people who are already staying here, but the people who will keep coming in in the future, is that we encourage businesses while also being mindful of the potential consequences that they have. So fifty dog kennel, as far as my understanding goes, would result in long-term consequences to our town that wouldn't be positive for the property values, for the noise, for the pollution, for traffic, for all of those factors. But potentially, is there a chance that we can look to smaller scale business, smaller scale ideas that we can bring to a town? Maybe a kennel that isn't fifty dogs, maybe a kennel that's thirty dogs. Something that our community of eight thousand people needs, might not be fifty dogs worth a kennel, this might be twenty. At the end of the day, all of these conversations and all of these points that I'm hearing today, I think they all come down to making sure that the people of our town have the amenities we need and have the right facilities and have the right living conditions, correct? We all want to feel happy, we all want to feel safe in this town. And what we should do is we'll sit for what they offer and say, hey, that fifty dog kennel or, hey, that amount of noise pollution is not fitting for the residents living near it. Do you have another idea? Can you propose something else? And I think it's really nice that we're having these constructive conversations, we're having people with so much more data than I would say we could, tell them and offer their very educated perspective. I just want to say, let's keep these conversations going and let's see if we can propose an alternative idea for how we can invigorate this town and keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments? Go ahead, sir.
I'm Don Cinnaman, I've been there in Wayover State for thirty years, twenty-five years. I haven't done the state work with some of the other speakers, but I just have a general comment. I went on the internet to canine website and their Highland Park facility, it's a commercial, there's not a house to be seen. That's where this facility, I think, belongs to. How to help, I think it's a good idea to have this facility connecting, you know, as part of one of the states. If you go on a commercial, industrial area.
Thank you for your comments. More comment? Yep, Tim, right?
I'll be brief, I don't want to beat a dead horse because a lot of the same twenty-sixty things were brought several times last week, as well as today by George. My name's Tim Jagua, I live at 4577 Pamela Court in Wayover State, it's a white Terry. We've lived there twenty-five years, we've raised our three kids there. I'm the closest property to this element. One thing I think people are missing in this conversation is it's not only a kennel, the dog, an outdoor dog park. And that's a big concern that we want to learn more about. How can you police the number of dogs that are going to be in this park? Am I outside having, you know, family over, having friends and I'm hearing barking? We have dogs on the other side of that property, what are they going to be doing? You know, dogs consent when there's activity near them, they're going to be all bound up. So those are concerns, we don't want to be, you know, hearing barking constantly. So, you know, the dog park really has to be really looked at seriously by the client board, whether that should be an opportunity to do that. The hearing also, I understand that the original notice of the hearing was done to the proper way that you were required to do that. However, I talked with twenty-five neighbors in Wayover State, no one knew that this was going on. The sign that posted in the property is unreadable, it's positioned improperly, you can't pull over there if you have a safety issue, you pulled your car over, you tried to read the sign. I just would hope that in the future, something this large, that the village of Long Grove would do a little better job of communication and notice for that public hearing could have been attended by the public. Because basically, we were not represented and we didn't have a chance. So that's what I wanted to say, so, thank you.
Thank you. Another comment, please?
Yeah, I'm Cheryl Kinnaman, 4544 Kimberly Court. We're far from the property, however, the farmer's field is between the property and us. When that camp was open, we could hear absolutely every announcement calling the kids, it just echoes across the farmer's field really bad. I mean, the dog park, there's going to be not only dogs barking and running around, there's going to be people yelling, "Go get it!" and, you know, screaming, "So their dogs, come!", you know, there's going to be, and there's quite a few people out there giving commands to dogs and they're running around. How do you control that noise? I mean, the traffic's horrible. If you try to get out in the morning or at night, when the camp is going already across the street and the daycare right down the street, you can't get out on Old McHenry Road. Now you're going to put another obstacle of people coming in. They'll also cut through our neighborhood. They can get in the North Kruger to cut through so they don't have to deal with the traffic on 22 and go back out our back gate. And then we're going to have a lot of flow, our streets are narrow, it's going to put wear and tear on our streets. I mean, it's just going to be a problem.
Thank you for your feedback. Another couple of comments, go ahead.
I'm Carrie, so, so I can, I live directly behind the site as well. I'm also a nurse for years, chemicals, waste products, noise, nothing that's going to be good for our health. It's a fact that if you have eczema, waste, urine, DPD, noise, that is not good for us. We have lived in Long Grove because we want to be a people, come home from a wussy day to a healthy environment, not the barking dogs, waste products and smells that we're going to smell all of that, right through my back door. I have two dogs, everybody has dogs, I love dogs, but not this one.
Thank you, thanks for your comment. Christine, Christine?
Hi, it's, as Cheryl and I quote, because I think I think email was there yesterday last week, but the one that was for some reason emphasized, I remember my phone, was in the ordinance, it called for a special canine related to that. I don't, what is that? Like, what is that? That's a little too broad. Is that going to be a big, you know, dog party, called a dog party with music and, you know, entertainment? I think that's a little, that needs to be defined. But again, what Cheryl said, the noise, I live right next door to her, we can hear the microphone when it became, it sounded lovely, dogs are not going to sound lovely.
Thank you for your comment. Do you want to answer that question? What are those events that you're going to have with the dogs?
Yeah, so we have done events such as like meetup, they are not enough to be, they're on sale however. The other thing that comes to mind would be things like a first aid and CPR type class. So I am going to get my instructor certification as well as another team member so that we can continue training our current team members that also provide that knowledge for the community.
So is that, is that the CPR, it's for the people or the dog?
It is for the dog.
Okay, got it. I had to ask that, I wasn't sure. Got it, I have no idea how to do that. Have to show me? So, okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, yes.
My name is Richard Hasminsky, my wife's a man, we have a residence at 4584 Kimberly Court. I do have a question as to how this facility would be managed 24/7, 365 days a year. I'd just like to hear an answer on that.
Got it.
Before I ask my next question, so.
Is that okay to answer that question too?
Yeah, so by law, we have to be connected to central station or have a sprinkler system. In our current facility, we do have video surveillance that we utilize to monitor 24/7 care.
So you wouldn't be actively on the site 24/7, 365?
That is correct.
So if we do have issues, where do those issues get addressed? Is there a dog manager?
Um, in terms of like an issue in the middle of the night?
Well, 24/7, we have barking in the middle of night at two o'clock in the morning, somebody's waking up, how's that addressed?
I mean, I guess calling the number, the police number.
Okay, I, I, rest my case.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we'll take one more and then we'll try to, go ahead, yeah, two more then, all right, then we'll stop, so, yes.
Hi, I'm Daniel Chedcoys, 81 Pamela Court. My biggest concern is the contamination of groundwater and then also the pond that we live on is directly across, behind our property. I think there are very, there are a lot of questions that, I'll just speak on behalf of my family, I can speak for Wayover State, because there are still many questions that need to be answered until anything that we move forward on that, on that line.
Thank you. Mr. Pippen?
All right, so same thing that he says, we've spent a lot of time with neighbors, I think this is bigger than our neighborhood, to be honest with you, so this is, this is in Wayover, so, Rob Teddell at 4577 Pamela Court, this is so much bigger than Wayover State, it affects the whole surrounding area. I was thinking of economic development commission, so I'm a big fan of economic development. I'm not saying we don't have this, it just is not the right location for it, right? So we're not trying to fight you on having a business, but what went through my mind is I realized what smart neighbors I have, because I've been on these, you know, texts and emails and phone calls and talking to lawyers, I'm like, every other day, there was like five more questions, I'm like, I never thought of that. So what I realized is, we're going through this process, is there's like forty-five unanswered questions from the ponds, to the traffic, to the noise, I'm like, I don't even know how we could even move one step further based on all these unanswered questions. I mean, you know, I work for a large organization, we would never push something like this through with all these potential liabilities and challenges and unanswered questions, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense, right? I'm not as analytical as George, but every time we'd have a conversation, I'm like, there's four more points that we never thought about and nobody's giving us any answers to them. So I just feel like, the whole thing, to me, doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Bill, is it possible to participate from the phone as well?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, well, and then we're going to stop, but yes, please, go ahead.
Sorry, Bill, it's Matt Beal, I'm at 4578 Pamela Court and George gave a lot of statistics that I hadn't heard before on the amount of urine etc. going into the property and it had me wondering if Long Grove is prepared to grant the ability for that amount of urine to be put into the ground, what's Long Grove's responsibility to ensure that it doesn't get into the water table? The, I don't really understand how that works, but like, there's clearly a lot of contamination that you're looking at exposing to the, to the land. And I'd remind everyone that although we are the properties nearby, we all share the same aquifers, right? It's not, the water goes everywhere. And I don't really understand what you'd be proposing to do to continuously monitor the soil to ensure that it's not getting deep.
All right, thank you, Matt, I think, thank you for your comments. I'm going to try to bring this back to the board now. Sure, go ahead, yep.
Yeah, Andre, 4547 Kimberly, Wayover State as well. Question for the board, what is the precedent for this kind of special permit application with the village? How often have you guys issued, you know, it seems like this permit is a pretty big deviation from what the current zoning is for the area, especially with the surrounding residential district. What is, what is the precedent with you guys in the past five, 10 years, decade of granting these kinds of special permits and, or what kind of businesses?
Want to take a crack at that. Vic, do you want to do that? I mean, they do happen.
Yes, this is Vic Felipini, one of the village attorneys. The village has both identified in the zoning code various uses that are allowed, but also does routinely react to requests for use when they are presented to the village and those are decided largely on a case-by-case basis, given both the location of the property, the nature of the use, and the surrounding uses. So in terms of the process that we're going through right now, this is a pretty routine process. As far as this particular use, I can say that in my twenty-plus years with the village, no one has proposed it, but that just means that no one has proposed it. We've had other things that no one has proposed, such as Sunset Grove, and that was something that was taken up as a, a new concept, considered through a similar process, and ultimately approved.
Thanks, Vic, appreciate that. All right, I'm going to bring this back to the board if I may and open it up for dialogue. I don't know who wants to start first, so, everyone's really quiet.
I have a question, usual.
We'll start with your questions then, that'll get a dialogue going, so.
I did have a question for Mr. Kinnaman. I'm trying to, towards the end of your statement, this is noise. I, I don't know, I don't understand, because there aren't enough trees to come to balance, you know, you'd be hearing each other talking, yeah. When we first moved in, we had a kids' party, it's like seven o'clock at night, it's coming from across the way, probably because we were too loud at the pool. And you can hear things absolutely, my husband walked down, he's like, what the heck? And they walked all the way down to the other side of the subdivision where the AUC was and you could hear every conversation. I mean, it really traveled. But another concern was that it was going to bring outsiders, that the law... That's pretty much. Yeah, because we have a gate, it's a back. It opens from inside, so you can't access it from Old McHenry Road, but if you come into the subdivision in North Kruger, which a lot of people cut through already... I've seen it, yeah. And then they go through our whole subdivision, which the roads are narrow, there's a lot of landscapers out there, a lot of kids playing. If they come all the way down, they can exit out at Old McHenry Road and that way they can avoid the 22 traffic. So that would bring a lot of people in our neighborhood that we don't need understood. And I agree with you and I've always, I'm a realist, so it's like, well, that's kind of strange, it's convenient. Well, Harren's Landing also has that same situation. Yes, yeah. It alleviates some of the cut-through traffic because they can't cut through from both ways. But you can from Kruger, so, and that's where a lot of people come from Gilmer to North Kruger and then cut through.
So Harren's Landing, you can't go either way, you can't go in or out.
What?
And you, at Harren's Landing, you can't go in or out at the gate, neither direction.
Do they change it?
You're going to come down.
Been there twenty-three years and something like that.
Instead of going down.
Because our, our kids had friends that lived in there.
So what I was going to say is, you could program your gate to do the same thing, let people cut through, that's within your control.
Yeah, so, sorry to interrupt. My name is Enrique Delatier, I'm the, I live at 4550 Eleanor, also part of the board of the president of the Wayover State, we have the board here with us. Our gate is programmed so that if somebody is going from inside of the subdivision out, it will open. And this is the way that it's programmed, from a safety perspective and from a flow mill, so landscaping and so on and so forth. So we do, I agree, and I think this is the point you were trying to make, we do believe that traffic will be increased as it cuts through from Kruger to Kennedy Road.
So that's certainly your choice to do that, but I'm saying you have the option to block it and other subdivisions have done that.
Then you block it, then...
It comes to these things.
Then you need a guard at the gate because if you lose your power...
Put a keep pad, that's what Harren's Landing does.
Then they don't want you to get in and out.
Right. Just think of a fire, right? Just think of an emergency.
And they have access. Look, I don't want to belabor this point, I'm just saying that's within your control.
Right.
With or without the dog. With or without the dog facility, that's within your control.
But why should we incur that aggravation, that expense, and everything else to have someone operate a business?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, I hijacked your question, go ahead.
We're worried about this, I want you to understand that the White Oak State is, there is a change right now in terms of the demographics of the, of the states. We have a lot of young kids, we have a lot of children, this is, the great thing about White Oaks is that we are seeing new families come in, we have a lot of young kids, you know, 3, 4, 5 years olds that are, they, they benefit because of the privacy that we have, that they can ride their bikes on the street. If we start to see this traffic, we are concerned that there may be some danger to the neighborhood. And I think this needs to be considered, yes, I understand your point. There could be some things that we could do, but it doesn't impede the traffic flow.
My, what, what I'm concerned about is, I, we, we had the same problem on Checker Road, where people drive 40 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour zone, and there are young children, kids, people, everybody young. It's a safety issue for, for a lot of Long Grove people, because people cut through. Um, and I, I hope, I find it curious that, that you're, you've had it that way for a while. They, there are a lot of communities where you have to have a clicker, do, like a garage door, to open the gate or force the gate, so that, so that you don't get the cut-through traffic. On ordinarily, much less, if you think it would be, you know, a traffic accident.
Sure, we do have a clicker on one end.
You do.
The problem with that, too, on the other end, where the gate replacement would have to go private property. And, uh, so we have approached that owner about putting the gate on his property, but he said, I'm not comfortable eating or giving land, feeding some of my land into the association that we can put a gate. So we have a barrier to that program, that, so we, it's not easy just putting a gate on that entrance. So we do have a clicker, uh, at the entrance from Old Henry.
Right. You, you could probably get a new one for a lifetime.
I'm not, I don't understand why it's the board's responsibility to try and solve this for a private road. Like, I don't, like, if the board wants to pay for this, is that the proposal, or?
Yeah, so, yeah, Matt, so, thank you, um, can, yeah. Okay, so, so, so bring it back to the board, what's your other stuff, right? So thank you, everyone, good dialogue, though. And by the way, I did try to drive through there, and I didn't know you could get out the other way. I would have known that. I saw the gate.
You can do the same thing at Haron Landing, right?
I didn't, I didn't know that, so I drove back the other way. Now I know. Now everyone else knows, too.
You can't go through, you can't go through.
Yeah.
You can get in, you just can't get out the other end.
Can't get out, you know.
All right, so take us, take us back, let's get control, please. Thank you, sorry.
One, one issue maybe you could address more in this, has to do with the trees, the tree replacements versus the trees that are there now. I'm not an arborist. Uh, it says there are 50 branches of protected trees shown in the blue, 18 3-inch caliper replacement trees shown here. Uh, in, in the last column of tree inventory listing on 76 pages. Are there gonna be less trees or more trees? I'm sorry, on page 2 of the report from Linden Group. Uh, question 5, or respond to 5.
So, uh, what we produce, we produce, uh, it's called a tree preservation plan. So a certified arborist, uh, he goes out there and he surveys the trees and tags them. And then the survey crew comes in and actually coordinates the trees around, and that's just a plan. So on the tree preservation plan, there's a huge schedule of 300 and something trees. All sorts of conditions, good trees, bad trees, quality trees, bad trees, and all that stuff. And so, um, the trees that we are removing is in the development area of the building, parking lot. So, and then, uh, so we are, it, and I mentioned this in the last presentation, is that we are installing 42 new trees. And 80 shrubs, and, you know, a handful, a couple hundred plants and crown covers and stuff. Uh, so we are providing new trees, uh, but that's not as a replacement, it's not that we're, uh, we're not, uh... So, uh, some communities, there's guidelines that have to be followed. Like, good quality trees, if you remove them, you have to pay for them, the size, or you have to replace that, that type of stuff. And, uh, we, we're not, the only trees that we are removing are the ones we have to for the development, and then the ones that are around the development, it would be like arid construction, they put tree protection fencing around. So, um, and that the arborist indicates where that, the size of that fencing, and that's done to protect those trees.
Right.
So they're preserved.
So this tree is no longer current?
You said it was question 5?
Yes, and it said that there'll be 114 protected trees removed, replaced.
Let me look at the.
33 additional trees, trees that are considered protected by law of ordinance, so it needs to be done.
Yeah, so, um, the tree preservation plan is 114 replacement trees. Uh, caliber, would that?
What is the caliber?
Uh, so like, uh, it's a, it's a factor of an inch, so, like a 6-inch tree, we call it 6 caliber, so.
I see.
So it's not, so if you had, you need to do a 10 caliber, if you had one tree that was 10 inches wide, that's the factor. So it's not 40, 10 trees that are, regardless. So it's the factor of 114 total caliber inches have to be replaced.
Okay, okay, and there's a total of 38 3-inch caliber replacement trees showing up.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's, and that's on the tree preservation plan, that's pretty standard. And the trees that are selected are approved trees by the village, not gonna call ash trees, you know, like, so, you know, like, so that's.
Those reviewed by our forester, too.
So, and that's.
I, I know, I just, I don't understand.
And so this is better than you do, by the, like, so we submit the plan to the village, and, and their, their specialists provide the comments, like their arborists will review it and provide the comments. And we respond to those.
The, the, um, what I am hearing, it seems that the soil and. Are the. Dections from the residents, correct, is that?
Property values.
Yeah, yeah.
Noise.
Yeah, that's a lot, all right, okay, so we'd be here to say that the 23.
I, I think that they're, I think that they're, right, if we were to categorize them, and, and not in order, but they are sound, we need to understand the potential contamination to the flood plain because of many of the boxes, you know, we all live in those wells, the value of the property. I know that we haven't talked about, you know, some of the impact that potentially has to the businesses. There's a business park right across from the dog park, right, Sorel, that just kind of is now doing outside dining. So, but I think that overall, yes, those are, could be the primary concerns. You know, having heard a lot of the residents that are not here today, those are the primary concerns.
Also, the development of the rest of the, the land in the area, the pond land that's zoned for 3-inch lots, how's that gonna affect their development and their sale? I, as far as I know, that, that property is for sale currently, zoned for 3-inch lots, but it's a dog park next to it. What developers gonna approach that area?
That I can't answer, because my crystal.
So there's just, it has to be a greater kind of picture, it's not just that isolated.
Okay, so, so in, in my mind, you know, without having to split the baby sort of thing, the, the question, or the, the reality is that there have been wild animals on this property doing whatever wild animals do, decades, you know, for, since the dirt was, was created. And, and I understand that this, this is immodious. However, these kinds of facilities, even the forest reserves, dog parks, what do you have to pick up after, after their animals?
Not here.
Unwidely, that really kind of is possible, okay? But you can't, I mean, the deer, the mice, the squirrels, the stumps, the foxes, the coyotes we have around here, they're all roaming everybody's yards, and I get it, I get it.
For Rita, do you notice when, because I've talked to, like, I know some folks on the board from accounting.
Yes.
For the forest reserve, they don't build those dog parks in residential neighborhoods.
Well, right, but the.
For a reason.
The project forest reserve.
The project forest reserve, but they purposely don't build in residential areas.
Right, so what I'm saying is, the, the issue is the same.
Yeah, I, I think you have to consider that this, you're introducing a different condition, right? I, I understand your point of the natural habitat. That's been there forever, and the, and the neighborhood has adapted around it, what we're, what we're hearing now, we'd like the board to consider, is you're now introducing something that's completely different. This is not that we're putting in 100 squirrels and maybe 3 coyotes that are in natural habitat, that do migrate around the location. This is gonna be a concentrated population that will bring additional impact. That's, I, I see your point, but I just, I think we have to make a fair comparison that the natural habitat is not the same as an introduction of a foreign, uh, state.
Understood.
Plus, those scrotters are gonna go somewhere else, and they're gonna move closer to us, because they're not gonna be able to be on the dog park anymore. They're gonna be coming at our houses more, so, than where they are.
So I'm, I'm thinking the state, the reports that we have, the residents haven't, haven't had the benefit of this yet. Is that, is that accurate? Because, because the, the experts in, in our packet, and, and we can easily share it, correct? The experts say, the people in, in, the scientists, you know, I'm, I'm not a scientist. They, they are saying that this is, this is not an issue that has to be dealt with.
So what, what you're saying is that there is a scientific proof, right? You have that available, that it will not impact the, the water, the noise, the traffic? But I just heard that we, I thought this was open.
No, we don't have all of it finalized yet, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we've got responses, we have 68 pages.
We've got information, but it's, but it's not complete, right? So, yeah, more work needs to be done.
And there's watch, watch the information, then you, you put 50 dogs there, and you have 1.6 tons of nitrogen coming inside. When you do that information, 50 dogs and this and that, then the scientists will come back. If you say, oh, yeah, dog park, 5 dogs or 20 dogs, that, that's a, the order will be completely different.
Well, the dog park, right, is my understanding from the last meeting, is the dog park's gonna cap at approximately 14 dogs.
How can that? If you thought they can come in and out at any time.
That, that we, this is something that.
They have software-controlled access, so they can.
My understanding was, the owner said it was a reservation-based system for the dog park. That was my understanding, maybe I'm mistaken, but maybe they could address that.
The plant said 50 dogs.
50 dogs in the kennel, which is on the southernmost part of the property. And my understanding from last meeting as well, was that those dogs aren't gonna have access to the dog park.
Right.
So the dog, the dog park's separate and apart from.
Because they're gonna have to go out.
They have that property, the exercise for the dogs, give them walks or anything like that? Because I know when you take your dog to the kennel, all the time they say, would you like a daily walk? Would you like playtime?
Are you gonna have those services available for your, for your boarders?
Playtime, no, we will be offering walks to our overnight guests or daily guests.
And where, what part, where do you take those dogs?
So they will still be south of the flood plain.
They won't be in the dog park?
They will not be in the dog park. That's a different amount of these, that would be a completely separate membership.
Who's gonna monitor it?
Yeah, just, how do you believe?
You know, they're probably going at night, and we're all gonna call the police because of the noise. And then that takes away from the police from monitoring, you know, I don't want.
I, I think I'd like to go back to the statement, you know, I, I partially assigned it, right? I'm an engineer by trade. So what I've heard is that, and again, maybe you can clarify this, but is there objective evidence that there's going to be no fit form or function change to the flood, to the noise, to the value of the properties? Have there, have there been a study done on this?
Well, so no, so I think that, those are the items that are open.
Right.
That would have to be addressed in order to get final approval, right?
So I'd like to, I'd like to add the consideration that we allow these things to be evaluated before any conditional or any permanent decision is made, because this has been very abrupt. We're still trying to recuperate from this, to try to understand it. We also want to understand this, look, we, we understand what, what's, what's being done. But we, I want to ask that you please consider that we don't have all the information. And as a resident of White Oak State, I ask that you please consider that, so we do have time to understand what's going on. And I'd like to request that you do not grant a, a preliminary approval until we do have time to be able to understand all those with proper scientific information.
A second.
Yeah, I know, we, so this is where, so Rita, I don't know where you're headed with this. So, I know you're trying to get more information, but we need to, like, discuss as a board here, too, so.
Bill, can you pull up my pictures? I got that to a property, uh, on Friday, that's okay.
And then it's my, my next comment.
Okay, go ahead and continue, and then we'll go from there, yeah.
The condition of the property right now is probably, probably responsible for the value of your home at this point in time. The concern with everyone who owns property is, oh my gosh, that's gonna, it's gonna mess up my property value. Adam has rehabbed pictures of the current condition of that property. If, if, if your home was for sale now, and people said, oh, I'm gonna go take a walk over there, it's only walk away.
There's no home for sale.
Oh, we're sorry.
We have no home for sale.
I'm sorry, that's completely correct. I bought my house three years ago, um, I was aware, well aware of your camp, like, your wife, curiosity, there's a sign. It did not affect my perspective or the other people that are new to our neighborhood.
That's not my point.
That is not correct.
My point is, my point is, that given the condition of that property, your house would act today. This project will improve the property.
It's not the noise.
I'm not buying.
It comes with the noise.
Bill, Billy, if I could ask a question, it's hard to get in from the phone, the, um...
You know, so, guys, everyone, all right, okay, no, hold on a second, everyone, please, every. Everyone's out of order right now, everyone, bring this back.
I don't think it's out of order, I just.
No, you are out of order, please sit down, thank you, I'm gonna take control, I'm gonna take control.
If the statement like that is made, a data should be brought forth.
I'm, I'm gonna ask everyone to be quiet and bring this back to the board. Okay, so Rita, if we can just discuss here a little bit, so that we can have an orderly flow, because we're not trying to get the residents ag, you know, agitated any more than they already are, right?
Bill, Bill, sorry, I was trying to, it's, it's hard on the phone, sorry. The, uh, the lady that's been talking, like, it's, it's clear that she's very pro-dog park and less pro-resident. I get it, that's fine, but that's, but it's frustrating, if you're all there to represent the residents, she's clearly not, and it's disappointing, that, that's all I'll say.
Matt, thank you, let's just bring it back to the board, I'm, I'm trying to keep order here, I'm not doing a very good job, but I think the dialogue's important. I can't, I can't share this, this is what Adam prepared, right?
I, I just took some photos, I mean, I just wanted to see the property. I get it, nobody wants, you know, additional noise, something's gotta go on that property. The reality is, and I haven't made a decision.
On the market.
But the reality is, the reality is, this property's been vacant for seven years, and my understanding is that there has been really no proposal or, or, uh, company or group that's come to the board with, with any of these farm-to-market ideas. How long should we wait until we make a decision on this vacant, dilapidated property? I love this, and I'll tell you right now.
Longer.
I don't know. I don't know, it's another ten years.
How long do you want to wait till other property prices go down?
I, I looked at this property, and I have, I have three children, myself, and two dogs, and I, I'll tell you, somebody raised an excellent point last meeting, uh, would you want to, would you want a, a dog facility three hundred and fifty feet from your backyard? And I thought about it, and I, I thought absolutely not. As soon as I walked on that property, I changed my mind. That's not saying that I'm ready to vote for it, but I, I absolutely, I'm so terrible.
Adam, Adam, please, yeah, bring it, bring it back to the board here, please.
Wouldn't we found you another fire? Wouldn't, wouldn't I found you...
Just everyone, please, please, with the public comments, keep this to the board right now, let's try to have, um, discussion on the board.
Do we have any regulations of pesticides in this, in this community? Bring pesticides on the lawn, anything like that? There's all kinds of things that could... Um, hey, the dog park doesn't really concern me as much as the kennel portion of it, fifty dogs in a concentrated area. But to me, the biggest concern is the noise to the resident.
Yeah, the noise is hardly a problem.
I think the noise is the biggest concern. And so that, that's my, my biggest, my biggest issue with this.
The noise sounds...
And pour the water. What I did is, I put, you know, one milligram of urine on this to ask if anybody's willing to drink it.
Okay, so thank you for that, let's, let's back, trustee Barowski or trustee Jamil, so, um, other comments?
Regarding property values, we have data in Long Grove, as a matter of fact. There is a place called Camp Canine, just north of Menards, and right behind Camp Canine is the Deer Trail subdivision, who is currently selling homes, which are actually very plain-looking homes, vinyl windows, asphalt, uh, they're not impressive homes, I'm sorry to say. They're selling for one to one and a half million directly behind Camp Canine.
There's no dog park there.
No, there's no dog park.
We're talking about the dog park, I'm talking about a property.
Keep going, keep going.
So the other thing is, I'm a little confused about something, maybe somebody can help me. So the thing I'm confused about is, all over Long Grove and in other towns as well, we've got properties, residences, that have both septic and private wells, and the septic field is usually located within a hundred or two hundred feet of the private well. And all that hundreds of gallons of raw sewage going into the ground at every property throughout the entire subdivision somehow is not contaminating those private wells. How is that?
It's not, it's not raw sewage, it's processed.
Five hundred feet away are going to contaminate that private well, when hundreds of gallons of raw sewage per day, per property, are not contaminating the private well.
Maybe I can, maybe I can answer that.
That's a sincere question.
I can answer that.
Are you a civil engineer?
No, I'm, I'm an electrical engineer, and I can explain it.
Me, too, congratulations.
Okay.
Well, you asked, and I'm right.
That explains everything.
Why are you complaining? So, the difference, the difference that you're stipulating is that a septic system is a controlled system, goes through different channels, different chambers, to be able to break down the matter and then put it through a gravel alignment. If there are, they looking at building a septic bed in the playground with the dogs, then we can have a different, a more technical discussion. So let me ask you a question, did you under, are you, did I answer your question?
No. So the report that we have says that the ground, maybe you have a copy of it, I don't have it in front of me, the gravel and the sediment and so on, at that site, as well as between the site and your homes, does have that property that would filter out the material.
That's a different, so you're comparing a septic tank to normal...
No, I'm comparing the septic field.
But, but the way that sewage works, how sewage works, it goes through chambers where it's separated, and then it goes to a field, it's a controlled filtration, because you are introducing matter. You do not have that in a dog park.
On the bottom of the basic property, it's more near fifty dogs.
It's, it's corrupted to be able to filter home, home matter.
And you...
Still confused how hundreds of gallons of raw sewage per day per property won't be a problem.
So, Cass, trustee, trustee Tanucci, I don't know that this, I don't think this one will be resolved tonight, right? So that's one of those items.
Yeah, I have one final thing. You're comparing it to dumping sewage.
Okay, you've made your point, thank you. The one final thing, it seems like the, the dog park is in contention for the dog park.
Everyone, we're supposed to be keeping this to the board, okay? Just make sure.
I'm saying something you might like to hear, let me talk, okay?
I didn't just... But...
Gavel, then.
Well, I'm not going to use the gavel, because I don't think I have to use the gavel, I'm just asking everyone, just be quiet for a moment, please, and then we'll try to do our best and try to be respectful to everyone.
So here's my question, um, I feel that the kennel, because it's well-managed, and because only ten dogs at a time are going out, and because there's the solid fence, there's not going to be a lot of barking and so on there. I'm not necessarily convinced that's going to be true of the dog park, because it's mainly unsupervised, it does not have solid fencing, and it's closer to your homes. So the question I have, this will probably be the question for the applicants, is, is the dog park an integral, is the dog park an integral part of your business plan? And would you consider maybe not having the dog park, but having everything else you're talking about? Because I think that would address many concerns. That's the question for the applicant.
That's for the applicant, please, yeah.
I have one other question.
No, just hold that thought, please, just hold that thought, let's, go ahead, what's, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I, I could, I could answer part of the questions, and then also defer to Liz, regarding, uh, whether she's going to, uh, forego the dog park. So, um, fifty dogs are inside the building, and the building has a sanitary sewer system. We don't have a septic system. So I think that's important to note, because people reference the dog park as fifty dogs, and as trustee Harris mentioned, in the last meeting, we talked, we were not talking of fifty dogs out there, based on the amount of parking available. As he mentioned, it was closer to fourteen. And, uh, so, I think that's important, because, um, the dogs are being boarded inside, and any weight is connected to a sanitary sewer system for Lake County is not going to great, like, you know, like residential properties or septic.
So what you're saying is they're peeing and pooping in the building? Or they're going out to, to go to the bathroom, periodically during the day?
Keep going.
Yeah, so, um, so I just want to find that, because I hear a lot of, I, I hear the fifty dogs peeing and pooping outside at one time, and the fifty dogs are inside the building. And as we talked last time, there's, there's been no discussion of letting fifty dogs loose inside, outside the building. The dogs are being taken to the yards adjacent to the building in small quantities, for like, exercise and play, not to go to the bathroom. Kennels have drainage systems, uh, we specify Midmark kennels, uh, want to look up, they're not cheap kennels, um, clients pay half a million dollars for these things, because it's very, very expensive. They have drainage systems, they have trench drains, individual drains, horizontal pipes, they're all meant to be cleaned, sanitized, and all that stuff, and, um, it's, it's the benchmark of animal kennels. And Midmark, by the way, is also a medical provider, so dermatologists and all the rest of doctors have probably got Midmark kennels in chairs, Midmark does pretty much anything medical and veterinary care. Now, your answer about the actual dog park. So Liz may want to address this, uh, what her thought is on, uh, worth keeping or not.
And I think that's a discussion, Jordan, I would have to have outside, whether or not, I don't think I can answer that right now.
So with that said, um, we have, I have talked to Chris and Karen, you know, um, we were talking about, uh, providing landscape buffering along the backside. I did talk to our landscape architects. To completely cover that whole five hundred feet would be extremely costly, um, and in my, a little cost prohibitive. So what we did actually talk about is that, is it worth, should we maybe reduce the size of the yard to pull it back? You know, right now it's three hundred or so fifty feet from the north property line. Talked about a street to take it another twenty or thirty feet south, help turn it back. That's something that, you know, we would just openly discuss. And I think that's important, because, you know, we've been at a few meetings, and we are trying to listen to the neighboring neighbors' comments and try and address them. So, uh, yeah, I'll continue to answer your questions.
With another possibility or a possibility, need to, to maybe follow the, the, you know, its noise origins, where I think we, we address that over country club stake. You can't, landscapers can't usually leave noise before we set it, I think, nor after, after...
Eight.
Yeah, the, um, in the ordinance, is, I think it's item J, it ties the dog park's use to the, to the...
I thought it was, I thought it said sunrise center, not, maybe that changed.
No, I just read it, uh, today. It's, it's item J in the ordinance, it says...
In their narrative, Rita, yeah.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, it, it refers, it ties it to the village ordinance of ours. Uh, I don't know the section number, but, yeah, I did read that today. Uh, I think that came up in the last meeting, to try to establish hours, like, it's not open twenty-four hours, the building for the ordinance.
I have a, I have a last question, like, regarding the noise issue, the, obviously it's a, it's a, but, as far as the building, or is there, um, more insulation in this building, say maybe somewhat the building you have now in Highland Park, just because standards have changed since that building was built, I would presume, and it's, it's soundproofing?
Yeah, so, yeah, so every couple of years, the energy code changes, so now we're energy code, and it requires more insulation on the outside walls, uh, and then...
Does it sound?
Yeah, so, it does, it does do sound, so, um, the more, more important thing is the tiles we use. We use a mineral wool, Rockbon ceiling tile, um, not cheap, um, it's probably five times the price of your popcorn ceiling tiles that you see made by Armstrong. The sound quality is excellent, um, we, we, you know, they're, they're meant for classroom settings, cafeterias, they're, have highly absorbent material, and that, that is the best performing product. We also do full-height walls, and all our walls are insulated with mineral wool. And so, um, like, if you're in a doctor's office and you hear the people next door and the examiner talking, I guarantee it's because the wall's not insulated and it does not go up to the ceiling. That's, every complaint we get, we go out there and investigate, and that's the issue. So we don't design that way, we design full-height walls that are insulated, uh, that's our standard on how we design all of our projects. It's very important, and that goes back to how we, as I mentioned before, is that we have a high level of care on these products, and we're very passionate about high-quality environment on the inside.
Trustee Jamil, any... Trustee Barowski?
Any particular questions? Just a couple thoughts. You know, that intersection is a busy intersection by kind of our Long Grove standards, if you will, not really a super, super slab, but it is a busy intersection. To me, it's unlikely that that property, um, will be a farm-to-table something. Obviously, if there was a business model that supports that concept, it hasn't come forward. And even if it did, what would it be? It'd be a restaurant, hours of operation till eleven, twelve o'clock, I don't know, whatever, which I think is a pretty big eyesore in neighbors' backyards. But obviously, we wait for the petitioner to come in and say, I've got a use, right? Let's consider the use, as, as Dick mentioned earlier, excuse me. So it's a busy, busy parcel, and the question is, what can go in there or what will go in there in the future? Could it be another quick trip gas station? Be a good location for that, if you think about it, it's a busy intersection, especially if somebody bought a little piece of that corner where the farm is and kind of moved into that old piece, kind of that big gas station concept. So my point is that, you know, this is kind of a special use, which has some advantages, and it also has some, some potential disadvantages. I think that the petitioner's done a great job in moving the building as far away from the residents and the neighbors as possible. I think they've been pretty, um, pretty cooperative with trying to mitigate some of those concerns already. Is it an ideal, um, use? I don't know. Would I like it in my backyard? I think this board knows, and the public of Long Grove knows, that I'm a, I'm a kind of a big not-in-my-backyard guy, right? So, I like to leave things alone, but I, I think this is, I think this is an acceptable use for that property. And I say that because the alternatives could be a lot worse. That property's not going to go, what is it, it's own two-acre residential? It's not going to go two-acre residential, not in Old McHenry Grove twenty-two, just not at that, in my opinion. So I think this is kind of a compromised use for that property, and if the plan commission can mitigate some of these concerns, um, you know, I'm sitting here Googling like fifty-five decibels and trying to figure out like what the noise ordinance is. You know, if you look at, you know, some of that, and you calculate, or you look at the decibel level of just human voice, and then you look at the properties that are in White Oak, which are absolutely stunning and beautiful properties, um, you know, most of the residents are kind of violating that fifty-five decibel rule just by talking over their walls or over their, not their walls, their other property lines. The patios are pretty close together, human voice starts at seventy-eighty decibels, and it's carrying at least, you know, that fifty-five is being violated, you know, in my opinion. So I'm okay with this use at this, at this location. I think the plan commission can vet some of the concerns a little bit more, and, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's an okay use for this, for this property, because it could be a whole lot worse in terms of the petitioner's coming in with different plans.
You want to make any comments?
Basically, the planning commission can mitigate the noise, some of the residents have rightly pointed out, uh, as the applicants are concerned, they can have some price-reducing acoustic, um, engineering, uh, you know, material inside. The other concern I have is the timings of the dog park and the limitation of the dog. So as we talked in the last meeting, we're willing to have some restrictions from ten o'clock to so-and-so time, that can also be incorporated for, you know, for the planning commission when it comes to final, you know, approval. I think that will lay a lot of apprehensions for the dog park portion, particularly dogs going in there, and the limitations can reduce the number of dogs at a time in the dog park. I would like to have a note before I go for the final approval, but for this, that's good said, this is okay, and they're willing to, is away from the neighbors' side.
Let me, let me just, yeah, let me add, so one thing, my, my biggest concern right now on this thing is, I walked the property and tried to drive through the neighborhood, but didn't realize I could get out, was that, I think it's, George, it's your house, that you can see straight to the barn on the farmland, right out your backyard, right? I think it's yours, whose house was it that was, it's your George, yes, you can see it. So the thing is, is that my biggest concern is the screening... So the thing is, is that my biggest concern is the screening of the dog park, and I have no idea what it looks like in the winter, because this thing will be used all year long. And I think the hardest thing for me is just kind of envisioning what it would be like without all the, you know, all the leaves, all the foliage on the trees, and what is it going to look like when all the, you know, leaves are gone? Well, they just see the dog park and they'll see the fence. And then there goes the issue, you know, their issue of a dog's out there and their dog's yard, and they start barking at each other because, you know, distance-wise, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, 400 feet or so probably to where the dog park is, or you said 350, another 500, 600 feet to where the actual, you know, the dog, I don't want to call them kennels because they're not, but the dog hotel, how about that, is going to be. So that's, that's pretty far out of the way. But it's that dog park that extends out close to their yards. And a lot of the houses I noticed, they're beautiful because they're pushed back a little bit, so you have this really nice long driveway, but your house is towards the backside of the property. And so the distance between the property line is a lot shorter, which makes that dog park closer. So my biggest issue is that, and I think the sound part of it, I think the sound part has to just be engineered and thought through in how you address that. We talked about some things here. And that, and the water quality issue, I believe that's another one of those that can be technically solved, too, has to be well thought through. But I don't have the expertise, we don't have the expertise to do that. And then the traffic, I sit there and I think about, okay, there's going to be another development that, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, that Hawthorne Woods is planning Kemper Ridge. Did you hear about that?
Yes.
Yeah, think of how many cars that's going to add. We're, I'm on record, we're on record opposed to it as a village, right? Because of how much traffic's going to add. So I don't know that, although it's going to add traffic, I don't know that it's going to add enough traffic because of the time of day that somebody drops their dog off and picks it off, picks them up is going to be an issue in my mind. But I understand the concern because I don't live there, you do. So I think those are the things that I just wanted to put out there, because I hear the residents' concerns, and I tried to put myself in their shoes, right? So I don't know how you can, the screening has to be worked out, that's like an important thing. I know we talked about Birmingham, it may not even be practical because it's so large, right? Seven acres or eight acres or whatever it is. But if that gets figured out, that mitigates some of the sound. That also mitigates the issue that they're talking about with, you know, their dogs seeing the other dogs and barking. And then the sound in the building itself, I'm assuming that can be, you know, that can be done where you can't hear outside. I'm assuming that can be done, but I don't know that. That has to be all sorted out. So my, my thing is, is I think those are the things that have to be worked out to make this work. And even that, it may not make the residents happy because it is in their backyard, and they don't have that now, right? It wasn't there before. And so it's a challenge, but I think that's what I see as the things that are most important to get figured out. So I'll just say that. I don't know where you all want to head with it, but I wanted to say my piece as well because I have thought a lot about it.
My position would be to refer back to the plan commission for the noise portion of it and get some expertise, a draft, report a distance as a result of it. The mitigating factors that can be added or that can be done to laay some of the fears because I can imagine what's clearly, the dogs barking all the time, you know, so as a neighbor, so I think, I'm not in all expert, and I don't know how many dogs can, you know, create that kind of sound intensity of a decibel level. And even that constant intermittent sound level, that also will affect the neighbors. So I totally understand the neighbors' apprehensions. I think get an expert review, at least, an expert to deal with this, can I in centers and kennels, and take some time before we go off on this.
Before us right now, so we have allowing the use in a residential area. And then we have the other item, right, is granting a preliminary specialty. So they're two different things, right? So, and, and so that's what's on the agenda. The other thing, it could be just fully referred back to the plan commission, although that may be difficult for the applicant because they'll have to spend a lot of money on some of those things and not know if they'll even have a shot at it. So that's, that's the challenge. So I don't know where the board wants to proceed on this.
My understanding is, if the preliminary approvals are granted tonight, it would still go back to the PUD for the noise mitigation.
Correct.
Well, the other, the other item.
The other item, too.
So approving tonight allows that process to proceed forward to go to the plan commission.
Second, you can already detect the sound mitigation.
Correct, they did, yeah. So, but the thing is, is if you choose to grant a conditional, you know, special use here, right, you, I think this, this board has to spell out all those things that you want to make sure are addressed. Because that's what the residents are asking. They, they want it to be addressed before it goes to the next step. And I just think, if, if you're going to do that, I think it has to be spelled out specifically. And some of it is, but maybe not all of it. Screening is, in my mind, is a big thing, and I don't think, I don't think that's fully addressed. And it has to be a solution that addresses the screening. The water, I think, again, I, you know, a little more expertise there. I have no expertise in how the well, I mean, how the sewer, you know, what that takes and what the county's going to require of, you know, cleansing of whatever goes into the sewer before it goes into the sewer, if anything. I mean, those things all have to be talked through and thought through, and I have it village staff to do that or not. And then the sound definitely has to be sorted out. But if you do approve this, you know, preliminary use here, right, granting a preliminary approval, PUD, I think you have to spell out all those things, or else, we're going to, I mean, first off, the residents are going to be unhappy anyway because they want it to be, they want it to go back to the plan commission and have it all worked out before any decision is made. So I just, I'll say my piece, and that's where I think you all, I mean, if you want to do this, that's the part that has to be figured out, is what are all those things, right? Because it'll come back to us, and if they're not solved, then, as I understand it, this won't go to final approval. So, I don't know. If anyone else wants to offer some words of wisdom like Vic, please do, but attorney, Philistine.
I'll be happy to. I, I think that the points you just made are all correct, and if you actually go through the draft ordinance, I think all of those things are baked into it as prerequisites to final approval. You know, as a general matter, all the final plans are going to have to go back to the plan commission for evaluation and determination of compliance. You'll see in the ordinance, it's on the top of page five, but it's a carryover from page four, is that everything's going to have to meet the requirements of law, which are basically all federal, state, and local ordinances and regulations. And that carries through the entire ordinance. We specifically note with respect to the engineering that they're going to have to meet all the requirements. Those will include stormwater management and wetland protection types of things. We also say in the final landscaping, and this one has a little more depth to it, consistent with what you were saying, Mr. President, and what the plan commission had directed, that the landscaping has to provide, quote, "reasonable visual screening for adjacent properties and street frontage, consistent with the character of the area." So that's something that we have a, an evaluative standard on. There's architectural review matters. The water and sanitary sewer, again, are subject to the requirements of law. And as had been mentioned several times in the past, this is going to have to be vetted both by the Lake County Health Department for any well, and by the Lake County Public Works Department for the sanitary sewer. One thing that hasn't come up is a lighting plan, but that also has to be done. We have very strict light spillover requirements in the village, and those have to be satisfied. There's some reference to signage. Again, we have signage regulations as well as more qualitative reviews. The noise is addressed in subsection J, and it does cover, I think, those issues not only structural but operational. And it requires that an operational plan be developed so that, I think, somebody raised a question earlier, that, well, what if there's a problem in the middle of the night? Well, the operational plan is going to have to have an answer to that. The operational plan will incorporate many of the things that we heard tonight in terms of limitations on the number of people who can use the dog park at any time, the appointment-only aspect of, of bringing the dogs to the facility. Those are going to have to be more specifically laid out in an operational plan that the plan commission will review and make a recommendation on, and then it will come back to the village board. So I, I think one of the things that, because of the numerous moving pieces, there's a bit of a chicken and egg issue involved in this. And, you know, even if this went back to the plan commission right now, the plan commission won't be able to get information on several things because those things can't go forward without an approved site plan. And a good example of that is the, the access and traffic issues from Lake Dot. So what we have tried to do, based on the plan commission's recommendation in this ordinance, is to make it clear that this is not a green light. This is a, you know, we're in a construction zone, proceed with caution, and you have to get through the construction zone and satisfy everything before you're going to be able to actually move. So that, that was kind of the rationale and the way the plan commission made its recommendation and what we've tried to then incorporate into the draft ordinance.
Thank you, Vic. Will entertain a comment?
There was a comment on notice for that, for that defective notice for that hearing, which could call in any subsequent approval because that meeting was not properly noted. And there's not a public hearing, which is against Illinois State statute and your own.
Vic, do you want to address that? Did you hear that?
I, I did, and, you know, this is something that has been raised, and the gentleman said Illinois State statute. There is no Illinois State statute applying to the Village of Long Grove regarding mailed notice. The provision that people have cited only applies to the city of Chicago. The village does have in its ordinance a mailed notice requirement, but it's only that the mailing is performed, not that it's received by anyone. And so I respect the fact that there is a statutory provision, but others need to respect the fact that that doesn't apply to Long Grove.
Thank you for that feedback there, Vic. Back to the, back to the board here on where, where you guys want to go with this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the authorized special uses in the residential zoning districts.
Okay, so that's the use, that's item A, right?
Item A. These are separate votes, I presume?
Yes. So we have a live motion.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Nucy, second by trustee Harris, to basically allow an ordinance amending the authorized special use in the residential zoning district, districts. It's a roll call.
Aye.
Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Varoski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion's carried. Now it's the second one. What are we doing there?
I'll make a motion on the second one as well.
Okay, moved by trustee Harris.
Second.
By trustee Tanucci. And that's an ordinance granting a special use, what is it, a preliminary special use permit?
It's to grant a special use permit for preliminary PUD.
Thank you, Vic.
Roll call, okay. Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee, trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Varoski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
All right, that motion carried. So what's going to be upon us is following through with all these items to get at the issues that you brought for us, right, towards us. And that's what we have to do, and that's going to go back to the plan commission, right, Vic, as the next step to address.
Yeah, I suspect, I suspect that there will be a period of time during which the applicant is gathering a lot of information and making submittals to the village. As is typical, those would be first vetted among staff and consultants, including any special consultants that might be needed for this one, and I would think there would be for the sound review, the noise review. And after those reviews are completed, then they would be presented to the plan commission. It would be pursuant to a public notice, public hearing, and then a recommendation by the plan commission and the action by the village board. If I might throw out there, just to avoid the concern about notice that has come up with this particular aspect, there might be value if the village specifically contacted the HOA president when this is coming forward. I throw that out as a backstop.
I was actually going to go there, Vic.
What's that?
I was actually going to, I was actually going to ask.
Oh, okay. I didn't say anything. Why don't you make that suggestion?
No, 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 it's good. I was going to go there saying that I don't want, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on. So to the extent that we can communicate to the president of the HOA to fan it out to everyone, but whatever else we can do, too, to make sure they're 100% in the loop, no one should ever come and say they didn't hear about it. And I know I'm going to do a better job. I've been writing in my president's messages what's on the docket. I'll continue to do that and try to do more of that so that you know. I don't think anyone probably didn't even notice it on there, but I try to tell everyone what's going on, because these things are in flight for a while before they actually get to a public hearing, so.
When I get nervous, that is beyond our time limit. I have authority to.
Yes, you do. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. Somewhere along the way, and we were one of the people that didn't have any idea before, Liz, I heard mentioned somewhere there might be a doggy daycare included in this, which everybody's thought. Is that true or false?
Liz, can you talk about how the people would use your facility?
Yeah, exactly. So the main building that has an occupancy of up to 50 dogs will offer enrichment daycare as a service that it offers. It's not a traditional doggy daycare like we have at our facilities, so it'll be more of an individualized service. If there be improved play, it'll be very small groups of up to five dogs. Otherwise, the services will be tailored to that specific dog. So mental, physical, agility sessions, things along that lines.
Thank you for that.
That's included in the 50. There's no more than the 50.
And I think that's something that you're going to spell out with the operational plans and spell out what that business is, so we'll get more of that, too. So, all right, we have a lot more to do tonight. I know this was hard for everyone. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to knock on wood that this is all going to work out, so, thank you. I know you have to go, yeah. So, all right. So the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of resolution of bringing the award of a 2025 road maintenance contract to Brothers Asphalt Paving in the amount of 808-391, the best bid alternative. I'm going to ask village engineer Perry to give us the review of that.
Give me just one second.
And as soon as he gets his machine working properly? Or does anyone have questions before he does that?
Could you just notice something?
I know you all have the parking lot out here in the village hall. I mean, would this, do you guys finally come up with a final plan on how it's going to look like and what this includes, the parking lot?
I can show you what the picture of it is while we're waiting for village engineer Perry. I can show you what the picture of it is while we're waiting for Village Engineer Perry to bring up his PC, right? So I think, is this the right one?
Yes.
Let me see if I can.
Zoom in down here to like up to.
Okay, so basically, there's going to be an additional 12 parking spots. So they'll be where the shed is over here. What we have a bid on is to put six spots over here, and then there'll be additional six spots around the drive out front there. So that's the proposal. Then everything else is kind of primarily the way it was, and then the handicap place is here, so that's that. So I don't know if this is something you want to, while you were trying to get your PC up, I was trying to show this.
No, I apologize for the delay there. As you were reading it, you were saying the low bid was to Brothers Asphalt in the amount of $808,391.
Yes.
And Manager Sparkman and myself caught that error. That is a bad number, and that was adjusted or corrected. Their bid was actually $707,934.74. And I bring that up because that is important in understanding the cover memo that I have for the overall road program.
Okay.
So, anyway, I'll refer to the one-page quarter memorandum in the support packet that includes, this year's road program includes essentially two components, which is the road resurfacing. We've got checkered road from Old Hicks to 1711 Brookside. We've got resurfacing the Village Hall access drive to Old McKenry Road, resurfacing the Village Hall parking lot, and going back to the exhibit, the base bid for this year's road program included adding six parking stalls at the southeast corner, which is right over here. Not.
That thing, where did it go? Where is it? There it is.
Okay.
Oh, geez.
So, anyway, that, and with that, we're going to take down the barn over there so we don't get any colorful graffiti on that either.
Taking down barn.
Not the barn, but the little shed. So, it looks like a barn. The barn's over here. I'm pointing over here. You're thinking of that barn?
See if I can.
I'm pointing over here.
So Jeff, are we figuring the bid?
Okay.
Work, or what are we actually?
Okay.
Because I really, really, really don't like those spots that occur. I hate, like, by the exit entrance to the hall. I hate those spots that are, I mean, unless you mark those like, you know, Lieutenant Keith and Mayor Bill so nobody else parks them. That's an accident.
Okay. Building to that, and building to that.
They can be staff only.
Yeah, it's just such a dark intersection there. People are coming and going, and I could just envision that lowest car pulling out of somebody, you know?
Okay, so the base bid that we get from Brothers Asphalt in the amount of $671,000 included the six parking spots at the southeast. Prior meetings and before going out to bid, it was kind of consensus that everybody was in agreement or consensus to add those six spots. The part that was not, you know, there were some differing opinions, was around the front access road adding those six parking spots, so we bid that as an alternate. So to the Village Choice discretion to award that or not, that portion to add those six parking spots was $36,511.50. So on the cover memo that is broken out there, you add the base bid, which is these, the six parking spots at the southeast, and then add the six additional spots around the circular drive, that gets you to that $707,934.00 number that I referenced earlier. And then the second component of this year's, you know, annual road program is applying Reclamite, the pavement preventative maintenance, to the roads that were resurfaced in 2023. They're all listed on the memo here, but adding, so that bid was $42,967.50. Adding everything together is a grand total of $750,902.24, which is below the Village budget of $834,000, which is a great place to be. So tonight, those are the bids that we've gotten, and we're looking for board approval to consider and award the contracts to those companies, which is Brothers Asphalt to do the paving work and corrective asphalt materials to do the application of the Reclamite. Once the contract is approved, we'll go through the process to get it executed, approved by IDOT, and then probably in two weeks or so, we'll know a little bit about when the work will actually start.
Can we just in an orderly flow then, just to go around? Is everyone okay? If I got this right, the annual road paving program plus the six parking spots where the shed was, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we got one.
The shed's over here.
Yeah, over here, right, yeah, okay. So then, the second thing was, does anyone want to add the extra six parking spots around the circle, or is everyone against that?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're already opposed?
I'm okay with four of them.
Four of them?
I just think the last two are terrible.
Okay, so you put that.
Because they just interfere, yeah, the bottom two, just somebody's going to pull out.
Put that up there so I can see.
And they'll, somebody going down the road.
So which two?
To the very far left still, those bottom two, right there.
Those two.
Because that's right at, like, you know, people are heading that way, and then somebody's going to pull out of that spot at the same time. I just think it's a real dangerous setup for that spot. Unless we like.
And that is a good point. I will, not from that standpoint, but the Village does have the option. If you don't want to do all six, and you only want to do four, you're totally allowed to do that, and you don't have to re-bid.
Or just, or label of law enforcement, Mayor Bill. I just think those are dangerous spots. Like, a night like today, somebody's going to take those spots and just pull out. I just think those are dangerous.
What's your question?
Where are those? They're right out here.
Yeah, they're right out here. So this is the front door to the Village Hall?
Where we always park as much.
We always park, we always park right here. We park right here, yeah, yeah.
Well, where's that little bridge thing, or the thing that looks like a bridge?
Right here?
No.
Oh, up here, it's up this way.
Yeah, it's right there. It's real narrow, it's dark. I just, I don't know, I just really, I don't care, whatever.
You make a good point.
It's not mine.
So this is where you always park right here, and I always park right, this is the other doorway, and this is the main entrance to the Village Hall. There's a circle driveways that come around. There'd be a spot here, spot here, and then these spots right here, that's how you get the extra six.
I like the idea of leaving it reserved, leaving it there and reserving it, especially the sheriff's vehicle would be great there, in my opinion.
This is the additional duo is on my right.
Right here?
In the ellipsis. It would be taking space away from the green space out there.
No, you still have it there. You could still park there.
I'm talking about the two gray things on the left. So those are the two extra spots, right?
Those are two extra?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there's four more here, yeah.
Yeah.
You can still park here where we always park.
Yeah.
Not parking, but.
So Jeff, all that gets repaved, so putting those extra spots in, you're basically doing it all at once, like paving the, whatever the circle thing is?
Correct. They'll build up the whatever spots you'll prove to be constructed, and then they'll put the final lift of asphalt all on at one time, and it'll look very uniform.
This is where the tree is? The tree that was dedicated?
Yeah, it's in the middle of the island, it's right here.
How do you know you don't mess up the root system?
Tiny, it's a baby.
I don't know, it's impervious surface.
Yeah. It's a small orch tree. Oh, what you looking for? Oh, right there, go through there, yeah.
I know.
Okay, so I know we're losing you in a minute.
I'm fine with whatever you say. Yeah. The next, the next better, pardon.
All right, so, I kind of got like a half yes if it was the sheriff's parking or the sheriff's spot, which I don't need. Are you okay with the extra, the 12 total spots that?
I was prepared to accept all of it. I think you made a good point about the last two. Either take them out or reserve them, then I don't think.
You okay with all of them?
I'm okay with all of them.
Okay.
Especially if you get a spot.
Would you feel?
I'd park there. You mean?
Okay.
I would go with six, extra four. You know, big deal.
Big deal, yeah, I guess.
Big deal.
Okay, so to get to a conclusion here, so can we have a motion then to approve, what is it, to approve the annual road paving base bid plus the annual road paving bid alternative for the extra $36,000 for the additional six parking spots? Is that what we need? You okay with that? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved by Trustee Harris, seconded by Trustee Tanucci, is that you? That would be me. Are you sure? Let's hear the spot. Okay.
We can get signage.
So we have a motion, it's live, it's a roll call.
Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Varoski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
He's gone.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
All right.
Ooh, interesting.
What, your name?
That's okay.
The, uh.
You asked me?
Trustee, President Jay.
Aye.
Passway.
Okay, so then, so motion carried, thank you, you've made your point. Now we have the next item on the agenda, which is the corrective asphalt.
Reclamite.
Reclamite for $42,000.
Yes, yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve? Okay.
I'm sorry, this is Vic. I have three to one on that vote?
Well, Bill, you voted.
Yeah, I voted yes, though.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you vote, Bill, thank you. That's where I was going on that, thank you.
Yeah, I broke the tie. I mean, I made the quorum or whatever you want to call it, so I'm the fourth voter.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, so then, it's moved by Trustee O'Connor for the corrective asphalt, seconded by Trustee Tanucci?
No, I'll take that one.
Trustee Varoski.
I did my Reclamite research again today, because I'm not getting any data from Village Engineering on how successful our program is, so I did my own, and Reclamite saw some stuff.
Okay, so seconded by Trustee Varoski, roll call.
Hi, Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Varoski.
Aye.
Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Is that all, is that all four? Yeah, okay. Motion carried.
Actually, the question I was trying to answer is, does Reclamite work because, or what's the, like, degradation factors involved in the Reclamite actually failing? Is it volume of traffic? Or is it environmental? So, the point is, if you've got a busy road, yeah, put it on there, but what if you have a little mom and pop cul-de-sac? Should we put it on there? What's the benefit?
I have a question. I asked the, for, uh.
No, go ahead, no.
I asked, um, I forgot his name, Jeff, Mr. The guy who owns the business.
Mr. Reclamite.
Well, he owns the business, because we had our.
No, I think that, I lost the network. Go ahead, keep going.
We had our two roads redone last year, and, you know, they're going to be in the neighborhood down the road, right? And so we're having them do our roads, because the answer was, yeah, it would help. It's not, those roads don't have the traffic, obviously, but those roads have. Like, if somebody, you know, puts on a vision and brings a drywall truck in, it would help the road, and cement trucks, or whatever.
Garbage trucks.
He said that, it will, it's, in the long term, cheaper than, I mean, every two years. But it's not beneficial to drivers. He said, you know, what, you don't have that.
You want to take that?
Yeah.
Just post it in.
Interesting.
So I have a question for the, what we just voted on for the $808,000, so the minutes are going to be like $700,000?
Correct. Yes, it's going to be $707,934.74, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then the Reclamite is $42,967.
I have a question for what we can do to save dollars.
With the what?
Save dollars.
Save dollars, okay, pathway.
No, actually not.
Okay.
With the addition, there is a nice courtyard deck that's been created.
Uh huh.
I think it would be really nice if you put a deck or something totally natural or impervious out there, so that our staff or people coming in for a sit-down, whatever, if it's a nice day, you could sit out there, you know, have some nice patio furniture.
The only question I have with that is, what do you do with those darn air conditioners? They're sitting right out there.
You can screen them.
For sound?
Well, don't.
We can learn from our dog barking.
So, I think it's something that should be looked at, right, but I just, how do you deal with the sound?
And the hot air blowing out of the roof somehow.
There you go, there's the air conditioning man, yes.
What if it does not work?
Yes.
Landscaping, don't even think about it. You have to have a solid structure.
Okay. So you'd have to do with some kind of a solid structure, otherwise it would be awful because there's.
Like a virtual.
Okay, where were we? Let's go home.
You only need one entrance.
So something that could be looked at, is everyone okay with looking at it?
Sure.
Oh, Chris has got another assignment. Okay.
Well, the other two haven't come through yet, so, you know, and also, I mean, what if we, I mean, you know, Trustee O'Reilly, I mean, can we tie a memorial into her in some way as well, or if we're going to put a little deck out there, it'd be kind of a nice thing to put her name on it or something.
Yeah, where do you draw the line, too?
I don't recall a trustee ever passing away while seated. I mean, I don't know if George does, but pretty unusual event around here, I think.
You know, a long time, he mentioned, a year or so ago, it was kind of a slight fancy that, back in the day, there was a cat that kind of lived here, probably not all the mountains he had, but, but that cat came back every year, and she, I remember her saying that, you know, it'd be nice whether we done, that there was a.
So could we dedicate it to her?
That's the point I was trying to make.
I didn't know what you were trying to make. I thought you wanted to have some statue or something.
No. I want it like a little plaque in the corner.
A plaque, there you go.
Yeah, do something that would be appropriate.
Yeah, okay, got it. Point made. All right, so discussion, so we, literally, it's five after nine. We've got a few other things to do. Your discussion of Route 22 widening project, are we, do we have time to do this tonight?
No. I had a suggestion for our social media team, and I guess that's still Trustee O'Reilly, right, but.
Oh, it's Trustee.
Oh, is that yours?
Yeah.
You get social media?
He's got communication.
Why do you have a bot running on all the social media platforms that every time IDOT posts the same thing, or one of our politicians, or senators, or representatives post something, why don't, why doesn't that bot just automatically go through and say, the Village of Long Grove is welcoming the completion of the.
Route 22.
Two widening program. IDOT, and just put it right back in their face every time they like post something?
Sounds great.
Okay, please do that. I was just thinking to me, like, why aren't we, like, making it a bigger deal on social media, saying, we want this widening, I back it off your ass, you know? Sorry, I'll be quiet now.
No, you're good. So the question is, how much time, we need some time to talk about?
Yeah, I think we need some time to talk about it, and I would also support moving it to the next meeting.
Are you okay with that?
For a few answers from IDOT.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, and then Village Engineers report, though. We always have time for that.
At least in always. All right, couple highlights tonight.
How excited are you?
I don't know. Missing the life. Uh, Village Hall Expansion, I know a number of, of folks were able to walk through there before the, the meeting started. Board room is pretty much set up with the furniture in there, got a conference room and the.
Nice.
Reinforced conference room. So it's, it's taking shape, things like that. I mean, Manager Sparkman wants to talk about the timeline, move, move, move staff over, he can, but I know we had kind of sort of talked about mid-July. Mid-July's kind of coming and going, so if you want to say anything, it's fair.
Yeah, we got furniture in now. So that was like my huge goal, to get that in there.
But the, the pod is out in the, in the parking lot, and that's going to be space to put some of the, the equipment on.
Can I just, while the thought came to me right now, so, I just want to bring this up. So we, you had, Trustee Borowski, you had brought up this idea of doing, you know, some big celebration or open house. And so I have a thought, because I was talking to Chris the other night, and I said, I think you got to do two things here. One is, we have to do a ribbon cutting when we do our first meeting there, and that's going to be done, we'll be using that before this is done. And second, is later on, we do whatever it is, open house or some kind of celebration when it's all done. But we, if the next meeting is going to be over there, and God, I hope that darn door's put in there, because that steel door looks like crap. But if we have to, we do, you know, we do a ribbon cutting just to open it up. And then we do a formal, whatever you want to call it, open house, you said barbecue, whatever that is, that, when the whole thing's done. Because it's not going to be done, but that's going to be open, and we're going to be over there, you know? So just a thought.
On the new patio.
And then the new, and then the new patio eventually. I don't know, what do you think about that idea?
Great idea.
Sounds good.
So sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted.
Ribbon cutting in two weeks?
In two weeks, will we do it? Yeah.
We'll be there in two weeks?
I hope, yeah, so the next meeting, we would do a ribbon cutting before we start the meeting, right? And, and just do that, and have the meeting over there, if we're able to do that.
Yes, we have a few things, I mean, the, the AV system is not fully complete yet, so we need to do that. They're scheduled to come out on Thursday. But we need the underground power to be connected at first. There, there's a few moving pieces yet, I hope to have it over there in two weeks. And the construction of this side is scheduled to happen, the demo the last week of August. All the contractors are working on school projects right now, so they're, they're occupied and won't be free until school starts at the end of August. So we, we have a little bit of a window to move staff from here to over there in temporary setup, so. And we have to clear out the entire space over here. That's not part of the scope of work, so we will be having an ELA crew come help us haul things out and move the stuff that we're keeping into the storage pod that you see out, out there.
Would you guys, would you guys look for volunteers in the community to help you guys?
I'll call you, Benjamin, if you want to come.
I mean, yeah, I'll check them, if you guys need volunteers, yeah. When the new village hall opens up, then we can center it at the other side.
Yeah, in the interim, ever, even during the day, if you come in to talk to people, like staff is all going to be centered there. The side will be completely closed, so everyone will enter through that side. In, when everything is done for village board meetings, people will enter through those doors. During daily operations, you'll enter through this door, and there will be a front counter here for interactive staff, so.
Yeah, if you guys can help with this, I think we should let us rush into the other one, not one.
Yep, thank you.
All right, keep going. Thank you, I didn't totally interrupt you.
No, that was the big update. Uh, Attenckisik Road, all the traffic, as I reported at the last meeting, got moved to the west side of the road. Checker Road is fully open, and to George's point here, if you're going northbound on Arlington Heights Road, especially once you get to eighty-three, you expect some delays.
Yeah.
Or a lot of delays.
Yeah.
The Archer Drainage bid that'll probably come in the second morning meeting in August. Anything I'm putting, giving that out to bid is for that. Um, and then, only other update I'll say is, Deer Trail is, Kent kind of alluded to earlier, is moving along, houses are going up. So I saw that the pathway was cut the last time I drove through, they got paved yet, so we're getting there.
Yeah, I drove through it over the weekend, so the roads are all in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Some of the houses, they, they look like they're, they're, they look longgrovish from what I can tell. They're a little bit larger than, than what I thought they might be, so.
I like your description of the houses.
So, so I like them. No, I like them, I, I like, I like their houses, I, I, so I don't, I'm, I'm one that was okay with them. So once I visited the other site in Lake Forest, so. So I think it's going to turn out nice.
Is there anything going on, on Indian Creek Road, like from Diamond Lake all the way through Hawthorne? All the, all the trees are tagged.
Tom Ed is doing some improvements over there. They're doing utility trimming to.
Okay, that's enough.
And they are going to, two spots, remove and replace holes, sorry, clear the area five feet around each direction to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Talk to them.
Keep us going.
Unless there's any questions, end of report.
All right, thank you. Village President and Trustee reports, I reported on the ceremonies for Bill and Bobby, so that's my report. Trustee Borowski?
Um, nothing to report except your invitation to attend tomorrow.
Thank you for doing that, by the way, too, yes.
Meeting on Affordable Housing.
Thank you.
That's sponsored by Lake County.
I'm at that new place on Gilmer Road, the barn, right at one seventy-six. That new event hall, yeah, they're having an affordable housing session with inviting all the local municipalities to it. I can't attend, so. It's Chris to go and.
Well, you know, I was thinking about like where you could put like low-income housing, like in a seven or eight acre parcel on Old McHenry Road, that'd be another good spot for it, right?
We're going to find, you're going to find out what it is.
Lake Cook, nerds.
A firebug? So thank.
But it's not supposed to be clustered, right, at this point?
So, so thank you, anything else? Trustee Harris?
No report.
Trustee O'Connor? Uh, we have to update the agenda, Trustee O'Reilly, and, oh, Trustee, Trustee Tanucci?
No report.
Okay, Village Manager Sparkman?
Nothing to add.
Now, do we need to go into executive session, not related to any of the discussions tonight regarding this other issue that we have? Do we need to, Vic, or not?
I, I don't think that we do.